Special meeting, North Springfield, Town Council, June 29, 2017. Madam Clerk, this is the board of the flag.
Brought us to an end of the spirit of council although we're serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mrs. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara. Yes. Mr. Solinsky.
President.
Ms. Birigay.
Here. Before we get going, I'd like to just publicly thank the Budget Committee for the hard work that you did. You know, you put in a lot of time and effort to fill it in. It's not going to appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. President, just for record, is this on the projector? What date is this? Just want to make sure that we have it for the record.
Six sixteen.
Six sixteen.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Six sixteen.
Six sixteen, thank you.
Just so everybody's on the same page, we, this is not a public hearing, so we will not be taking comments or questions from the audience unless specific department members, heads of departments are addressed. Other than that, we're just going to go through the budget. This is not a public hearing. Okay? Moving on, vote our actions on adoption of the budget. So let's begin. I asked if anybody had an issue with me beginning with the school department. So if you can.
Mr. President, so we're not in capital yet, but it's on the budget, correct?
Correct. It's on the budget.
All right.
Just let me find it. Page fourteen or fifteen. Fourteen. On the bottom. On the bottom. Okay, on the school department. Does anybody have any changes? Or does anybody have any comments on the?
Well, which line are you running from?
We're going to go with the administrative, the administrator's proposal.
The county?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. President, if we want to get this all organized, so you want to, which one do you want? There's like multiple spreadsheets I want to follow. That's why I asked about the change.
Yeah, six sixteen.
Six sixteen, right?
Yeah.
And which one do you want?
Well, I can.
Six sixteen, right? Revised?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. For the other.
You want. So the administrator is recommending a 2.11 percent increase in the budget for the school committee, I mean, excuse me, for the school department. And the Budget Committee is recommending a 2.5 percent increase.
Mr. President, I am totally, I thought I was trying to follow, sir. We're on page fourteen of fifteen. If I just, I've got one of fifteen. Do you mind if we just start on page one and work our way through it?
I just, we're going to go back to the top.
Okay. Page one, fourteen of fifteen here. Thank you.
Is everybody, everybody got it now? Right.
Because I just changed. He just had me change. The council president just asked me to change it to the town administrator. So what I did is linked the town council to the town administrators. So that's all I changed was that column.
All right, so we're going to discuss that now and possibly change that one where we're at right now.
I take my point, point of view, Mr. President. I think Councilman Zalinski was asking if page fourteen does not match the screen. That's why, that was, it matches me now. Okay? Well, what I was asking for to have the correct date, because there's numerous alterations of the budget, and so now I know that it's June 16. We're looking at that, and we skipped over, on my page, this is fourteen of fifteen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
What you don't have on your sheet is the council column.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
That's what you're.
A bit, a number of times, thank you.
Okay. So as we look at the town appropriation, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the appropriation?
The administrator has recommended 2.11.
Correct.
The Budget Committee has recommended 2.50.
Correct.
I feel that we should split those two numbers down the middle and make it to ten or thirty-nine percent difference. You with me, Cynthia?
Thirty-nine percent, if you want to split it, would be half of the difference.
Right. Would be half of the thirty-nine. So that would be my recommendation as a motion.
You bothered?
No. Oh, oh, sorry. So we're looking at this, correct?
Correct. And there's a motion. Make a vote on it. Split the difference between 2.11.
Sounds a little hard. So we should go with the future.
Okay, well, right now, there's a motion right now.
Yep.
By Councilman Halloran. Split the difference of 2.11 and 2.50 as the town appropriation.
And somewhere in the middle, correct, Mr. Halloran?
Yes.
I see.
Yeah.
I. I'm leaning towards my, what I would like to see is to go with the Budget Committee, opposed Budget Committee on this particular line item of the 2.5. I thought that the, I thought the school department and the school committee did a good job at explaining the need for the money, the need for the 2.5 percent increase. So I propose that we go with the 2.5.
All right, so. Sorry, twenty-one, Mr. President. Is Councilman Zalinski seconding Councilman Halloran in his motion? So?
I would throw my second.
You would throw it?
I would throw my second. So we're in dialogue, we can continue.
If Mr. Halloran would draw his motion, then we can have more dialogue, right?
All right.
I know that we're all, I know that we're all caught up with the, that they had a surplus last, last year, what was the surplus, three, three something, three?
Two point.
What is, they had a surplus of like $300,000, $300,000, right?
Forecast, yes.
Forecast for this ending fiscal year, but we have a two point something.
We have a.
Three years. Million.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But it's only one current.
All right.
Use of fund surplus.
And if you look, it sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but it's only, it's 1 percent of their total budget. Okay, that's not, that's, if you ask me, that's actually pretty good budgeting. If they came in at the end of the year, I know only 1 percent off of their budget. I put it in personal, though, personal terms, I have a very small business. Tom, you have a very small business. If I budgeted 20 buckets of paint for a job and I came in at 18 buckets, I would think I did pretty good, but really I was off by 10 percent on maybe a $7,000 job. These guys were off 1 percent on how many millions of dollars? So I think that's, I think that's pretty good budgeting, and I think they showed a need for that money.
I think that I explained my position to the superintendent just before we came into the meeting. So I'm going to stand, my position is, I'm going to stand to split.
Okay, so then I'll.
Make a motion.
Did you, Dan, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we split the difference between the 2.11 and 2.50.
Is there a second?
Is there no motion, Mr. President?
Well, there is no motion. I'll make a motion that we go with the Budget Committee's.
Wait, wait, wait. I made the motion, there's no second. Was there a second?
No, there's no second. I would throw. I didn't.
Originally, Councilman Halloran, you made the motion, I thought I'd meet you halfway to the discussion, and I approved it, and he was, so right now, there is no motion.
Okay, go ahead.
What you want to make?
All right, go ahead, President.
So the process would be, we're going to take Dan's motion first.
No, there was no second.
Right. Is there a second on the Councilman Halloran's motion?
No second.
No second.
There were no second dialogues. I don't.
Now, I will make a motion to go with the Budget Committee's proposed recommendation of 2.5.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? That roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran.
No.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes.
Yeah, let's start from the top again. Go back to page one. We have page one, we'll go there too. Okay, the town council, the total, Budget Committee and the administrator are on the same page.
Mr. President, motion to accept both the Budget Committee and Town Administrator's calls of $10,750 for town council.
Point of procedure, Mr. President, if there's no discussion, discussion on it, we would take a vote at the very end just to put together, in other words, we just continue on, no discussion.
With Councilman Halloran, I just, department by department is what previously we have done. I don't know legally.
I'll ask you for opinion, Mr. President.
Either method is, either method is perfectly fine. You can vote on it, department by department, or you could comment on the department. If there's no comment, vote on the budget as a whole. Correct, if I may. Previous Council Halloran, for the last times I've been doing this, we looked at every department. If any council person had a comment or a suggestion, we took it department by department. In order to just, I don't know, stay in sync, I made the motion to approve the $10,750 for town council budget, and then the next thing, possibly probate court, we kind of move through it. This is not a long procedure, it should move smoothly unless someone has something to offer.
What's your ruling, Mr. President?
We'll do it department by department, just like we did with the public hearing.
So to refresh everybody's memory, I just made a motion to approve $10,750 for town council, which includes the stipend received, office supplies and special details should be included. That's a motion.
Second?
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara. Yes. Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes. Hold on. So did you want me to, did you want, we discussed earlier, would it be easier to go to the salary now?
It doesn't matter to me because I had it all linked.
What's that?
So if you give me a percentage, it doesn't matter to me because I had it all linked, so if you give me a percentage of what your thoughts are by department, it won't take me that long to go back and forth.
All right, we'll continue going as we ask. Probate court. Is there a motion to accept the $8,000 that is recommended from the?
So moved, Mr. President, under advice of the Budget Committee, $8,000 is on the council.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes. Town solicitor. We also have agreement with the administrator and the Budget Committee on this one.
Mr. President, under the advice of both the administrator and the Budget Committee, I'll make a motion to approve $187,300.
Second motion.
You have a second? Anybody further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes. Municipal court, we have a discrepancy, the town administrators recommending $36,733, and the Budget Committee is recommending $36,891. It's not a significant difference yet.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to accept the Budget Committee's proposal of $36,891 for a municipal court, which is a 1.22 percent increase.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
I'm sorry, guys, so we have a second on that, Mrs. Solinsky?
Yes. For the Budget Committee's proposal.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes. Moving on, the administrator's office.
You find it's a total question.
Okay. Okay, the administrator's office, we have a slight, just a slight discrepancy again, 116,951 from the administrator and 111,973 from the Budget Committee. Is there a motion to accept the?
Questions.
Yes, sir.
On the administrative assistant, I had kind of heard discussions that new people coming in, who are going to receive this favorite of the seven rate, is that?
Hey, Dan, can you use the mic? I'm here, I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had heard discussions that there were some people who were opposed to new employees receiving the 3 percent pay raise, being here less than a year. Is that in effect?
Yeah, I was going to make, bring that up at this, while we talk about salaries, but we can do that now.
Yeah. I just want to know what position.
No, I feel that, and no offense to anybody that's, that's been here for less than a year, but I feel that if somebody's been on, at their position for less than a year, that next year they'll be eligible for the raises, but this year they will not be eligible.
So when, then, looking at the Budget Committee's line, what would you readjust that to?
If you can readjust that.
You want zero?
I don't want zero. Oh, just, yeah, if anybody.
Any other, one year.
Yes.
Mr. President, further dialogue on this. The new folks that came in with less than one year's service, I, you know, I certainly don't have a problem with a 2 percent raise for anybody that's new, and we'll get into salaries later on, 3 percent for those that have been here for more than a year. But I certainly would support, the administrator had put down 1.98, let's call it 2 percent. I'm okay with that for the newbies that have been less than a year. We certainly want to retain them. It's a great town to work for and work with, so I would have no problem with the administrator's recommendation of a 1.98 percent for the administrative assistant.
So that's, that's your position now, Mr. Solinsky?
It is, Mr. Halloran, yes.
Well, the reason I disagree with that is because we set these salaries in order to bring people over, so they were set, and we made agreements that this was, this was what the job paid, that's why we wanted to bring you over. And they haven't even been here for a year yet to, in that, in that, in that position in order to, with that new salary that we set as a council, we set that salary as a council, and now we want to give them a raise. And like I said, it's awkward right now, but no offense to anybody, but it's just a little too early.
Just too soon. McGee?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go on that vote with you.
So from my understanding, that Councilman McGee and Councilman Birigay, that both of you feel that folks that have not been here for years do not get a 2 percent raise? Because that's what I was saying, 2 percent, 3 percent raise, nothing.
Right. We, we jacked that to get these people, and, and now we're going to give more, I mean, nothing personal, they're great people, but it's, it just doesn't seem, seem right to me.
You know what? I'm coming around to your line of thinking, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you got any motion?
We need a motion. All right, so right now, I'm going to, right now, I'll entertain a motion that anybody who's been an employee of the town for less than one year will not be eligible for a raise of any size.
I would second that, Mr. President. I'm sure Mr. McGee probably would want to.
I would, yes.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, time, I just jumped in.
Okay, roll call on this, please.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes. So now, getting back to the administrator's office, does that change, that number?
So the administrative assistant says it 31673, correct?
I mean, the number's on the bottom.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as the figure, more than that, it stays the same.
It's minus 950.
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
So now, I'm going to, this is on the, we're going to go to the town council and column, and we'll set, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the town council's column on the town, on the administrator's office.
Cynthia, did you change it up there?
Yes, I changed. I'm the administrator's assistant.
We don't have a column, right? So if you would tell us what it is.
All right.
This, on the.
Oh, there it is, okay, yeah, my eyes. All right. Thanks. So, if I may, Mr. President, Cynthia, the bottom line for the town administrator's office, what's the total? Is that 116?
116,0023.
Thank you. I make a motion to accept $116,823 for town council, town administrator. I, I, I'm having problems.
Seven, seven, nine.
So is it 1,000, 160,823?
Zero, three, zero.
Oh, zero to three, okay.
We started looking at the Budget Committee's column and acting on that, and now we're referencing the administrator's column. I want to make sure you know which one you're approving, because it's 5,000 higher because of the grant writer, and I would agree with the circumstances, we don't need the grant writer.
All right. No, you're right, I went down further than, further than I should have on that. So.
So what is the total?
Well, we're going to.
160,951 minus 950, 160, 116,001.
But the substantial difference between Budget Committee and my recommendation.
Is the grant writer.
Is the grant writer, which was not a fact of a February submission, and at this point, I don't believe we need that grant writer.
Okay, so. Why not? Well, because Mr. Kravitz is going to be going, taking up that role, right?
And is he getting his, just with his present salary in lieu of getting a, another stipend for doing that job?
But it's always been the perspective since he was hired.
Right.
It disappoints me that you choose not to manage the position in your prior position, and I'll say that since you.
I, I, I always.
But it is, you know, yes, that is, it was an expectation of his.
All right. I just want to tell you, I always supported the grant writer, and I would support, I'm grant writer, or we've had before, that they got a, 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 like a percentage of every grant that's up.
Yes, yes.
I think a good grant writer would allow my limits.
I, you know, if Council O'Hara wants to make that motion to approve $5,000 for a grant writer, I would support it, because there are administrative fees that they get paid to monitor and make reports, whether it's federal or state grants, so that motion, that's important.
But we.
McGee?
But we hired him to do that. That was the increase. That was part of the job, that's why we increased it so much. That's what I understood when we did that. That was the reason why everyone was like, oh, why was it increased? Because he was doing the grant writing too. That's why.
I, I think Mr. Kravitz is going to be extremely busy rewriting the comp plan along with the help of planning board members, so $5,000, if we can have that as a, it's a token stipend for some of the right grants, someone taking the initiative, and any administrative payments for monitoring and reporting on that, I don't have a problem with that at all, $5,000. I think that'll pay for itself. Mr. Kravitz is going to be a very busy man in the next year.
Question from the administrator, when you hired Mr. Kravitz, was that part of the salaries to write the grants? Part of the employment.
Grant writing was considered as part of his responsibility.
Okay. I say the town, the town administrator says he doesn't need a grant writer, he's, it's his office, and we give him the only way that he's requesting.
Okay, okay. Love dialogue, it's good.
Okay, so Cynthia, can you eliminate that?
I can.
Okay. So now, the new number is 111,000, 023. Does anybody have any, any other questions regarding this category? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the 111,0023 to the administrator's office.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? None, roll call.
Mr. Halloran.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Solinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Birigay.
Yes. The town clerk's office. So is, all these numbers changed now because we, oh, no, we didn't discuss the salary yet, okay.
You'll have to give me a couple of minutes and between each one's up and change it on the other screen, okay? As you go along.
Just tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay.
Mr. President, if, on the town clerk's office, we have eliminated department of 141,305, we have the administrator's 143,727, and then we have the Budget Committee's recommendation, $144,587. I would like to make a motion to accept the Budget Committee's proposal, $144,587.
Discussion, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Halloran.
All right. Let's take a look at these numbers. Let's start with the deputy clerk. I came before all of you when I spoke at the budget hearing. I came before all of you when I spoke at the budget hearing in reference to wage stabilizations. And I spoke to you because what I had done is I went out and I got the Finance Director to help me. Matter of fact, she did it for me. And we went to the small towns, such as Warren, Tiverton, places like that, Bristol, and we looked to see what they were paying. Our Assistant Town Clerk, the salary is 34,345. The average rural is 42,515. We talk about maintaining good people, I agree. But if you're going to maintain good people, I think you've got to pay them. I don't think... We have never had, since I've been on the council, a wage stabilization. We had both Mr. Kravitz come and the Finance Director herself. They came to us and the Administrator said, we need more money for these positions. I supported him each time he came. And then I started looking and listening, and I heard that the Building Inspector was going to leave, because he wasn't making enough money. I said to myself, wow, we've got problems here. So I went out with the numbers, and I think it's only fair to pay at least what the other rural towns are going to pay. If in fact you're going to maintain these people, you've got to pay them a fair salary. And if you don't want... You don't care when you have turnover, and we have had turnover in the executive area since we came on the council. So I would say this to you, gentlemen, I feel that the 42,515 is a reasonable amount to pay the Deputy Town Clerk.
Anybody else have anything to say? I would like to see the Deputy Town Clerk... And we didn't get the salaries, but I would like to see her get a salary increase, just like everybody else is going to. 7,000, 7,000 plus is...
8,000, or 7,000?
Yes, he's better than that, I am, but 8,000...
8170.
8170, that's a big jump right now.
According to these numbers, Mr. President, it's 23.79% increase.
That's correct.
I wish I had one-tenth of that increase in my pay. Sorry, I... We know she is... We love her, she does a great job, but that's... It's a lot of money. And you know what, we were elected to represent the citizens of the town. I don't know anybody that's got a 23%, let's call it 24% and round it up. I don't know, who's got a 24% pay increase? Is she worth it? Absolutely, she does a great job, can we afford it? I don't know.
Then I... Then let me come back and say this to you. We have already replaced two people in the executive group, a total of nine. We have one looking for a job, and what are we going to do? Are we going to turn around and do as they do in baseball, where we have to go out and get the free agents? And just pull somebody in? Isn't it better to turn around and pay her a fair salary? I'm saying fair, fair compared to the other towns. Yes, that is... That $8,000, according to Mr. Rappo, when I remember him speaking this, that would be one-half cent of the tax rate.
Council Halloran, did you say someone was looking for a job right now?
Yes.
What, you're not understanding? Refresh my memory, who was it?
Building Inspector.
They just filled a position in Smithfield with the Building Inspector, who used to work in our town with these Brownstown Inspector, Smithfield, so... You know what, our town is a great town, management is good. People leave because of poor management, and maybe I'll get the other town to value the reason why management is dead. A 23% increase, let's call it 24%, that's huge. That's huge.
What would you give them? Tell me what you'd give them.
See, you're putting me on the spot, I'm just saying that 3% for anybody that's been here for over a year, we just discussed this like 20 minutes ago.
So you send 3%, or do you go for that decision?
Is it in recognition of her contribution? Probably not, she's a great person, she works hard for this town.
I'd give her the Administrator proposal's 2.5%.
I'd go 3%. I know, we're splitting years, I mean, we come down to the budget.
But I don't want to go individual, individual people.
No, 24% is huge.
Well, my point is, I don't want to go individual and say, this one's going to get 3, the other's going to get 2.5.
Right, right. I would say everybody that's been here for a year gets 3%. I'm probably overly generous. Those that are less than a year, 2%. We want to keep them... Look, it's an acknowledgement of the great job that they do. Could we give them more money? Probably not, because the taxpayer is going to have to pay that levy, not us. I mean, yeah, we will, but that's just my feeling on this, I just think that 23... Well, let's call it 24% increase, that's huge. Who gets that? Who gets the 24%?
People who will pay a salary which is not even comparable to other towns.
All right, let's move along, first of all, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to increase the salary of the Deputy Town Clerk from 34,345 to 42,515.
Is there a second? Okay, it dies in like a second. Now, we're going to... I'm sorry.
You're going to get something, I'll... You're going to... Somebody's going to make a motion now.
Well, that's what...
Well, it's... Yeah, I would make that motion, I've said it several times, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for the Town Clerk's office to approve $144,587. That includes payroll increases of 3%, because folks are working more than a year. So the motion is to... $144,587, Town Clerk's office.
Wouldn't that include the 3% increase?
It does, it's the Budget Committee's recommendation, 3%, which I'm very confident in.
May I comment, Mr. President? You know, it's easy to push these numbers around, 2%, 3%, whatever, and 22%. The... I try to remind everyone that what happens here tonight will be the metric that's set across this town. And as I've... The towns, the municipal side payroll is $4 million. The school department's payroll is $14 million a year. 3% of $18 million is $540,000. That's really what you're talking about when you do this. It's not about one individual, two individuals, it's what you're accomplishing with the leadership of this community. And I have stood firm with recommendations of 2%, not because of what I felt individuals are producing at, or, you know, worth, or whatever term you want to use. The circumstance is, where are we, and where do we need to go? And my advice is that we cannot afford 3%, because it's going to come back and bite us real hard. We have a total opportunity to raise the levy by $1.3 million if we were to bump right up against the cap. If you spend... If you encourage a circumstance where we wind up spending overtime, it won't happen in a month or in a year, it will be what we wind up spending. We've got a contract in negotiation right now. And, okay, you want to give everybody 3%, recognize what's happening. It's $540,000 once it creeps across this town. And what does it leave for you when you're trying to deal with all the capital issues that exist across this town? I was in the City of Warwick's council chambers today, and again, amazed. I mean, here we are as vagabonds once again. And this town needs to be able to invest in its infrastructure, for schools, for municipals, for sewer and water, and if we push it all out in the budget, in the operating budget and salaries, where are we going? That's, you know, I just question you, and try to explain why I offered what I have, because, it's not because I'm proud of it or unhappy about it, it's because it's what I think we need to do to lead this community. As you wish. Are there some key people, when we talk about management? If we don't wind up keeping key people in this community, we will constantly have a lack of institutional knowledge that we're having to wrestle with right now as we do this budget. We're paying the same money, we keep losing ground, and that can't keep happening.
Sir, your recommendation is 2.5%, correct?
In this department, yes, it was.
Mr. President, if I just look at one line out of Deputy Clerk, it's $171 a year, that breaks down to $3.28 a week, the difference between 2.5 and 3%. Come on, and if we want to retain people, this... You know what, it's almost an insult that we're going 3% there. I'm going to make a motion, Mr. President, to approve the Budget Committee's for the Town Clerk's office of $144,587. It's a motion.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to go with the Administrator on this one. It's not our money, it's... If it was my money, I'd give it to him, but it's not my money. So...
The motion was to approve the Budget Committee's recommendation of $144,587.
We have a second?
We had a second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran?
No.
Mr. McGee?
No.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Zulewski?
Yes.
Mr. Biergad?
No.
I would like to make a motion to accept the Administrator's recommendation of 2.5%. Second? Okay. Which would be 143,727. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Halloran?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Zulewski?
No.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Okay, so where are we at? What do you think, Cindy, you have a thought? So we're a link pass?
No, we're not, I'm telling you why.
Why? And I'm going to make a motion right now to approve the 144,587.
I'll second that, Mr. Halloran.
Very reluctantly, I'm going to leave that, but I think that's the most...
Is there any further discussion? Okay, roll call on...
144,587.
144,587.
Mr. Halloran?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Zulewski?
Yes.
Mr. Biergad?
No.
The motion passes.
You guys can't hear us? Oh, I'm sorry.
He made a motion to accept the...
I made a motion to accept.
The 144...
144,587.
Back to my original motion.
Planning Division. These numbers are very similar. Do we have a motion on any... Any questions? Oh, we'll stand by. We have a recommendation on the Planner's salary again.
Mr. Zulewski?
Mr. Zulewski, excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Halloran.
On the Planner's salary, now he's ceilinging here, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. We have him down for 33.23.
That... What we have in front of us on the spreadsheets, Mr. Halloran, is a Department request of 30.62% increase, $19,924. And then we have the Administrator's proposal of 33.23% of $21,624. And as you can see, well, that's not what I'm looking at. We also have the Budget Committee's proposal of 32.9% increase, which is $21,412. Is that what you speak to, Mr. Halloran?
Yes, it is.
And what is your point, sir?
My point is, just does, under your philosophy, we just passed, he does not get the 2% raise, 2.5% raise, correct?
Correct.
So what would the other be?
You know, I have to say that the highest position in this town is Town Administrator, elected by the electoral, and the Town Administrator makes 75,000. I know Mr. Kravitz does a great job, but again, I want to come back to how many people get a 32, 33% pay increase in a year? I mean, I wish I had 100% of that.
That's not where we're at, folks.
Where are we at?
That's not where we're at, he's already at $85,000 a year. He made that decision when he was hired, back in December.
Oh, forget it, he's getting the 85, we already...
And I'm happy to see him pay more than he's...
Sorry, sorry, I misspoke, thank you, Gary.
Very good.
Thank you. We already voted on that, didn't we? Yeah, that was a contingency from last year.
No, but we already voted on anybody that's less than a year is not going to get an increase.
So therefore, his number has to be the 85, correct?
Again, I don't have a problem if someone that's been here less than a year gets a 2%. That's just my philosophy on it.
All right, but we already...
I get it, I know, I know.
So now that changes over to the Town Council number then, correct?
So what is the salary for the Town Planner going to be, 86,488 or 86,700?
85,000.
Okay, so we're going to stay with 85?
Because he's been here less than a year.
Okay.
No offense, Tom, but...
I just clarify our numbers.
Yeah?
The raise we put in there...
The raise that we put in there are rated for seven months of service.
I understand.
And in that showing 32% increase, it's not correct, because it was $65,000 for prior year.
Okay.
Gary, thank you, we appreciate you screening that out.
So can you scroll that up a little bit?
This way?
Yes, so we can see the final.
Now, don't forget you have another position in there.
What is that?
Here.
G.I.S. Specialist.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all. I would support that.
Mr. President is supporting it.
Yeah, I would support it.
Back to 3% for anybody still handling it a year.
Mr. President?
I don't support that.
Mr. Administrator, isn't that a union position?
It is, it's a contract in negotiation.
So would you give that raise now, or would that be part of the negotiations within the union?
That's... The budget is not the contract.
I understand.
So... But as I offered earlier, you're leading the charge here. And if you put in, we'll have that back. I had an offer today of 2.5%. I take that back, I'm sorry.
2.01?
Gary, is it 2.5 or 2.01?
My recommendation was 2.01.
I'll make a motion to accept the Administrator's pay raise recommendation of 2.01% for the Assistant Planner. Is there a second?
Second.
I just want to get one thing.
This is...
A discussion, Mr. President, I would like to ask the Administrator again, if this position is covered by the union, would you not negotiate that within the school with the union?
Yes, it is what we are doing, ongoing.
I understand, so why there would be a line in the budget for that, then?
Has to be, the line for all these salaries, we just, in some way, shape, or form.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second to accept the Administrator's recommendation of 2.01% of the Assistant Planner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Halloran?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Zulewski?
No.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Can I offer a point to make? You have other, at least another position... Can I offer, maybe you have other, at least another position that you approve that three percent that is part of that parting?
Now, would, would, would it be possible, would we make, make it a little easier if we did across the board, said, letting...
That is what I would suggest we need to look at, because this is gonna become painful.
Exactly, it's already started.
So, you know, if you have a, a decision that you wanna apply, wants to apply them,
I know Mr. Swolenski's gonna disagree with me, but I would like to make a motion that anybody that's been here for more than a year would get a two percent increase in salary. That's my motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Further discussion?
Yes. Are we gonna go back to the beginning now with the Town Clerk's? I believe we gave them, where am I? Well, I believe we gave them three, so are we gonna go back to two? Is that what, is that what this was?
That's, I voted, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't vote for that, so... Well, how do we, how do we, should be across the board?
Yeah, Council President, I respect, you know, we, we disagree, that's such a common term. Someone that's been working for this town for ten, twenty, thirty years, come on, three percent.
But did you realize they get a raise every year, though?
Yes, yes.
It's not like the private sector. They get a raise every year. And, and the thing is...
And always it's into that, Mr. President.
Gas prices went down.
But the Administrator makes, he makes a very good point. We're talking over half a million dollars. And if it was my money, I'd give it to him, but it's not my money, and I, I take my, my responsibility with other people's money very seriously. So...
No, so I, I don't understand what we're doing. Could you explain to me?
I made a motion, then we have a second, to across the board for anybody who's been here for more than a year of two percent.
So that gets rid of the three percent?
Does that get rid of the, the salary?
That's across the board, that's the...
We're very decided on that. So, Mr. President, if I may, 'cause we're in a discussion.
Yeah.
Mr. Halloran, this is a case of two point five.
Point of legal power, okay?
Sure.
Mr. Iglesias, we voted three percent, but the court's... Now, if we're gonna vote two percent across, do we wipe out the three percent? Well, you have to, it has to be unanimous.
No, no, no.
We're gonna go back for a vote of reconsideration. All right, if that's what you want to do, Mr. President, then let's go back to the beginning for a vote of reconsideration on all the salaries. That's, that's where you're going, that's what we better do.
And it would have to be those in the affirmative. Did you vote no, Mr. President?
Mine vote was no.
Okay, so you have to abstain from this vote, correct, Mr. Iglesias?
You can't move on vote. You have to abstain, and you can't be the voting party.
Okay.
It has to be somebody in the affirmative.
Right.
It was four of us.
Is that a motion, Mr. Halloran? Was, was that a motion to come back and be...
Is it? I'm asking if, if that's what the, the President wants.
If that's what, if that's what is required, then yeah, that's what I want.
All right, I'll make the motion.
You already have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry.
An employee here more than one year gets a two percent increase.
Okay, so we're gonna withdraw that, start again?
And you have to withdraw yours, because that was one, Mr. President.
I'll withdraw for now.
You second.
Mr. McGee.
What? Withdraw, sir?
Withdraw, sir.
Withdraw my second, okay.
What do we got?
Okay, so now we go with that. Your motion was the...
You need a vote of reconsideration. You have someone to make a motion for a vote of reconsideration, starting at the court's office. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Halloran?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Swolenski?
Yes.
Mr. Biergau?
Yes.
So let's now go, Mr. President, what do you want to...
Now I will make a motion to...
Motion reconsidered, passed.
Yeah.
As long as it's open.
So it's clean?
Yeah.
Clean slate. So now I'll make a motion to give everybody in, all the town employees that, non-union employees, two percent increase across the board for all the employees.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Swolenski?
Let's put the ticket, so, two point five, Mr. President. It's, you know what? In the scope of things, it's pennies. It's, it's not a lot of money. I, I think that a two point five, it's just my opinion, we split the difference, we're great, we have a consensus, and...
Mr. Swolenski, there's a motion on the floor, by, seconded by...
They can withdraw that, Mr. Halloran, if they wish.
Do you wanna withdraw that, or do you wanna call a vote? It's callable. All right, I'll call it off. Call a question.
Mr. Halloran?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Swolenski?
No.
Mr. Biergau?
Yes. Mr. President, I can make a motion to consider a two point five percent increase for all employees that have been in the employment of town, like Smithfield, for over a year.
You have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Halloran?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
No.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Swolenski?
Yes.
Mr. Biergau?
No.
Okay, so where are we at, Mr. President? So now, did that make, was that my plan for the meeting for you now?
Two and a half?
Yeah. We're gonna need a couple minutes. Okay. We'll take a, a quick five minutes, that's...
Sure.